Okay, we'll call this morning's meeting to order. There is a change on the agenda, item number six. The update from Veteran Services will happen at a later date, so let's remove that from the rest.
I'll move to approve the agenda with the change.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Oh, second, yeah, okay, whatever. But I think Tim Dent's coming in there as instead.
Right.
Okay.
Anything else? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Citizens to be heard. Is there any citizen that wishes to speak on anything not on the agenda? Seeing none? Move on. Approval of the payment in bills?
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the minutes, we have the January 2nd and 9th minutes present.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we'll move into Mr. Milton's, uh, agenda item, filling the restorative justice position and changing Victim Services' position to a .8. Good morning.
Morning, all.
Morning, Mark. Number two.
What?
That's it. I think we skipped number two. That's all right. We'll do it after.
Oh, I can wait?
No, you're good. You're here, welcome.
Well, thanks for having me here, appreciate it. Um, I've got a busy agenda, so I'll kind of move right in. So I have two, two separate positions I'd like to discuss with you. The first one being restorative justice. So restorative justice job is a very big piece of what the Victim Services does, meeting with juvenile offenders and victims, bringing them together, trying to bring restorative justice. It's a great program for us. We had a restorative justice coordinator previously. She left the position, and at the time, we didn't refill it, and we really just worked within the Victim Services. We had Michelle and Nikki within the office to work to just take on some of that, those duties. So, that money is, has been out there, and so we had hired a part-time position, Amanda Hosted, who had been doing what we call the, um, restorative justice, um, assistant. But she's now gotten her degree, and we have the money available. She is, I think, an excellent, uh, person to have in that position, and to have a restorative justice coordinator to take on more of the, um, you know, the authority in doing some of that type of position and type of work. So it would be a .75 position at line of grade 14. It would be fully funded through grant funding. We have that grant funding available. It's been budgeted or sits out there within the budget, um, so it doesn't have a cost of counting. And that's really, I guess, basically about it. And so I'm asking the board to approve that position.
Okay, thank you. This was a topic that the PICT committee discussed last week. Commissioner Campbell and I were both present to that. Do you have anything to add to that, Commissioner Campbell?
No, I, um, you know, we had extensive conversations with Brian and had a lot of questions, but, uh, ultimately, uh, this was either budget neutral, or it was something that the dollars were already within his budget, that we had already previously approved, and, um, so I think our PICT committee certainly came out in support of, of this request.
I'll move to approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the request. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, appreciate that. And then, so the second position is Lacey Johnson, our office. So Lacey, as I told the PICT committee, commissioners were there, that, I mean, she really is a superstar within our office. We've really appreciated her work. She works a .4 position or a part-time within the Victim Services area, and that's really her, I think, specialty and her background is in that area. Separate of that, I needed somebody up front, part-time, to be able to answer phones, that type of thing. I have a, a .8 position up front currently. I use roster to allow Lacey to come up and work .4, to be able to answer phones, process paperwork, talk to people up front, and she's been a superstar up there, too. She's just an extremely organized lady. She's just smart, doesn't need a whole lot of supervision, takes on a lot, and gets along well with everybody. And so she's been doing that now for a little over a year. Well, under the ACA, you can't have a .4 in one department and a .4 in a, or .4 in two different areas without paying benefits. And so I went back with Darren and did the calculations that you, I think, would have in front of you, that calculate her at a .4 under the Victim Services grade 14, and then a .4 under grade 10, which would be what the secretary position would be with benefits. And so the .4 under Victim Services grade 14 is fully, um, grant funded. That piece is out there, all grant funded. The .4 piece that would need to be funded through the county would be the, the other piece that she's been at a roster that would now have benefits. And so the requirement is to have benefits, and so we do need to do that if we want to keep her there. I do need the, the assistance, I mean, it's something that we, I would have to try to look to figure if we didn't have her in there, which isn't always easy to fill, to find somebody who works just .4 part-time. So I'm asking that we would look to make her .4 FTE under Victim Services, .4 FTE under grade 10, under my department, or under the county attorney's department, with benefits, and that's the calculation that it comes to.
And that information wasn't included in our packet, but I do have this from PICT committee, if anyone would like to see what that grid comes up to be. But you explained it exactly as the sheet says, so, um, we did have a little more conversation about this because there is some county funding in this, but, uh, really, because it has been something, she's been working in a great capacity. We talked about, you know, what would happen if, if this wasn't extended, and if we were advertising for two jobs, and, and so on and so forth. And I think it was the consensus of the PICT committee that this was the best avenue to go. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, the, um, so the, the roster wages that you were paying her, on the one side, that's going to be a wash with, with this being a full-time, because you're no, no longer going to need the roster dollars.
Correct. And so one of the things I think I explained maybe more so or clearer in the, in the PICT committee piece, too, is when I made her roster, I kept her at the same level she had been making within the Victim Services. When I went back and talked with Darren, the secretary position really would be a lower grade, you know, so she, instead of being a grade 14 at 2105 per hour, she should be at 17, 26 per hour. So that, that piece there with, by placing her really on the correct grade and the correct line, um, it actually pretty much is about the exact same that she was at previously under the roster. And I do know that just based on looking at my budget, where I think there are going to be some retirements, something else, I don't, this isn't going to be an over-budget process. I mean, I'm going to still be well within budget. It's just really making sure that she's fitting in with the ACA, that she has benefits, and, and it's still a position that's filled, that's needed, so, so that's really what, what I looked at.
You, you mentioned the ACA, and, and, you know, we can't, um, we can't have somebody .4 in two different positions and not pay benefits.
Right.
And that's, uh, I mean, I, I just can't do it.
Yeah, that's, that's when I sat with HR and went through that, and knowing we have to do that, and there's only a couple, only a couple options. It's either release her from that position, or to hire somebody else, which seems to not make a lot of sense when you have her there, and she's a quality person and knows what she's doing, plus having to advertise, plus you can just find somebody to do it versus having the right person fill that position, and she really is a stellar, uh, she's, she's the type of person that the county should want to continue to keep working here. I mean, a smart, millennial, well-rounded lady who knows what she's doing, so that's, that's why I'm coming to you to ask to approve this piece of it, and, and I think it would benefit the county.
As Commissioner Mojo said, the, uh, this one probably had quite a bit more conversation during the PICT committee than, than the other one we just dealt with. Um, you know, and what it really boils down to is, um, this person would, would be doing two different time cards for their different job duties, but the, where it's, makes a difference on your budget is the benefits. And you've told us today, and you told us in the commit, in the PICT committee, that you still think you can find those dollars within the current budget dollars you were, you were approved for, and, and I think for those reasons, you know, as Commissioner Mojo said, I think we, we also favored. Nissan is glad to hear that you have, uh, good employees that you want to, want to keep around.
Right.
That's just, that's always a good thing.
That's for sure.
You know, we have some departments where we can't keep them, and so we're...
Great. Is there any other discussion?
I'll move to approve the request.
We have a motion to approve the request?
Second.
And a second. Any other comments or concerns? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, I'll see you everybody. Thank you.
We'll move into our item number two that I neglected. Tuesday, February 6th is an exit issues conversation that will be happening that is pretty important to keep the dialogue up, the diversion update. That is scheduled to go in the morning, so, uh, we're looking for a request to change our board meeting to 10:00 AM that day.
I would move the change to 10:00 AM.
A motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Three minutes. Tim, will your update just take a few minutes on the Felton Prairie?
Yep.
Okay, let's do that first before the hearing, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Commissioners.
Probably take that much time.
Can I talk real slow?
We're fine.
Uh, as far as the update on the, uh, the Felton Prairie sale, uh, the DNR did, uh, move on the option to purchase that, $260,040. They've been very slow in getting paperwork to us to get the closing out of the way, but I did receive an affidavit of the landowner and a warranty deed the other day. I sent them down to Jenny for her review. There is, uh, one change that needs to be made on the affidavit. The DNR is doing that now, so, uh, hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have that paperwork. It'll need to have the chair's signature and, and Brian's signatures on it. We'll submit that back to the DNR. DNR will cut us a check and send us the fully executed paperwork, so...
Well, we really appreciate your work on that. I know it's kind of been a, a long process in terms of deciding what to do with that parcel specifically, and I think it was fully vetted out between several of the commissioners on this board before it was brought to this body, so I appreciate, Tim, what you did to, to get that done.
Thank you.
Any further comments on that? All right, well, thank you.
Are we there yet?
We have a minute.
I don't know if you've been downstairs to the assessor's office. Uh, that work has gone extremely fast. Carpet lingers started yesterday morning, and we're done.
Yeah, it looks great.
They're done. So, uh, somewhere by the end of the week, I believe, that we'll be moving from second floor down to, or third floor down to second floor.
Good. We'll look forward to that. I think it's a good move.
Yep.
Well, we are now at 8:45. Uh, we do have a public hearing scheduled to amend the zoning district. Uh, do we have a motion? Do you open the public hearing?
I'll move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in a public hearing. Tim?
All right, uh, this public hearing is proposed rezoning, uh, kind of shrinking the Resource Protection Wellhead District as it relates to the city of Barnesville's drinking water supply management area. I do have some overheads here, uh, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about. Back in 2004, when Barnesville did their initial drinking water, or their initial wellhead protection, uh, plan, the Drinking Water Supply Management Area encompassed this entire purple area here east of the city of Barnesville. And because it's outside of the city of Barnesville, it really puts us in the position to put some regulation on it to protect it. So what we did was we took our Resource Protection Wellhead Zone, and we laid it over the whole drinking water supply management area. Wellhead protection plans are, are updated every 10 years, so in 2014, Barnesville was working on theirs. It was late last summer that I actually saw the final result in their new wellhead, uh, drinking water supply management area, which shrunk substantially, uh, compared to what it was before. So now what we actually have out there is, that's their drinking water supply management area, and this is what our zoning district still covers. I talked with Mike Reitz, uh, at the city of Barnesville, the city administrator there, and asked him if he had any issues with us reducing our, uh, Resource Protection Wellhead zoning district down to what their drinking water supply management area currently is. He said, no, that'd be a wise decision, because in the areas that are yellow crosshatched, there's some additional protections and limitations as to what people can do, and if we don't need to have them in, I don't think they should be there. So, uh, what the rezoning would entail is bringing our Resource Protection Wellhead District down to match the size of the Drinking Water Supply Management Area for the city of Barnesville. Uh, that would take it off about two and a half square miles of property that are no longer in the Drinking Water Supply Management Area. So it would, it would be shrunk down considerably. I guess if there's any questions you might have?
Just a comment, this is, this came before the planning commission. There was some good discussion there. There was not any representation to speak for or against, and the planning commission did vote unanimously to recommend the change to this body. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, so was this just a, uh, this was totally done because of the change in the WISMA, right?
Right. So there was no other underlying reason that somebody wanted to have this?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Well, I, I, you know, sometimes, sometimes there is, that those types of things happen, and so it's just nice to have it in the record that...
Um, part of this area is in a joint, is in the Barnesville Joint Powers District, so, whether they had any, you know, concerns or comments from people there, I don't know. But I just, when I, when I saw their final WISMA, um, it just didn't make sense to have our wellhead protection area, you know, three times the size.
Right.
So it didn't make sense.
Any other comments?
Move approval.
Uh, we need to close the public hearing first.
Oh, sorry.
Is that a motion to?
Motion to close.
We have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. Now what are this board's wishes?
Move approval.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. Any further comments or questions? Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, we are a little bit ahead of schedule. Commissioner Campbell, do you have your committee assignments, committee report ready?
All right. Okay, we had, uh, just gotta get these in order here. After last Tuesday, we had our personal issues committee meeting, and, um, we spent, most of our time was with, uh, our county attorney, Brian Milton, regarding the issues we've done today. We have, we had some more discussion regarding, um, the new hire process for 2018, and, you know, I think, uh, Brian maybe will comment some on that on, on his report, but I, you know, I think what we, uh, what we talked about there is a process for, um, new hires that go outside of what was budgeted for the current year. We, we certainly knew that there's going to be some new hires that were going to be done, for example, uh, come fall time with the correctional facility, those needs, so we're, you know, the topic wasn't about those, but it was about non-budgeted ones and, and how we go about that process, so, you'll hear more about that. Then, um, on Wednesday, we had the, uh, diversion authority public outreach meeting, and the public outreach has really been kind of sidelined during the task force meetings, and now we're gearing up with, um, obviously, as everyone's heard, that there's, there would have to be some alignment changes, some things happening, and, and so the public outreach is gearing up for where we would have to hold meetings in some of those communities where, where these impacts are shifted. Uh, it's going to be critical that we get out to some of those areas, uh, to visit with those people. And then on, um, Thursday, we had a diversion authority meeting, and that one, again, was kind of the same thing, not a lot of, we've got some, um, updates on the current in-town levy projects that are auth, that were authorized to continue. And, um, we are going to have a, a group of, uh, one, one member from each of the entities who are members of the diversion authority, so there's the city of Fargo, the city of Morehead, Cass and Clay Counties, and the Joint Water Resource District. Uh, one member of each of those that serve on the diversion authority are going to be a part of a group that's going to meet to discuss, uh, pending litigation and those type things, so there's going to, there's also going to be representatives from the JPA, the Corps of Engineers, and the DNR. And, um, so I, I'm scheduled to be on that, and we're looking at possibly a meeting next, next Monday. Right now, it looks like in St. Paul to, to deal with that. So we'll see how that goes. Then Monday, yesterday, we had our, our semi-monthly or bi-weekly, uh, construction project update on, on our two projects, and, again, I, it sounded like a broken record, but everything's going really well. You know, we have, uh, Brian and I were just talking this morning, and we have, uh, we literally in a two-week period, uh, have seen no change orders and no nothing. It's just, uh, it's, it's quite amazing to see, uh, with the amount of work that's going on, you know, very little. And I'm sure you're all seeing the in, the Friday, uh, pictures that come out, uh, recap of the work that's been done. It's amazing to see what's going on, and, and both those facilities worked inside that we, as a public, don't get to see on daily basis, so, um, I just, I can continue to be impressed with the, the work that they're all doing. That is all I have.
I appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we are now ready for Mark and Tim's update. Tim's update first. I didn't know that Mark wasn't going to be here, so welcome.
Sometimes we're done at the same time.
Okay.
I was in schedule for a couple weeks, but...
Whatever works.
... yesterday, and moved me up, so...
I just want to say quickly before you start, thank you to both of you for your flexibility in offering your space to MetroCog, so we could facilitate our executive director interviews. That was really helpful, to have that at a neutral site, so thank you for your hospitality in that.
You're welcome. That conference showmen are, I think, is quite frequent for, I think, that's a very, very good room.
It's a useful room.
Yes. All right. Good morning, I'm Tim Dent, I'm the Technology Services Director. My department is the, uh, the T-side of IT, and you'll hear from the I-side here shortly after me, but, um, our mission statement for technology services emphasizes the delivery of high-quality customer service in a cost-effective manner, and is responsible for strategic and operational planning related to the technology and its use by the county. Major activities include the selection, acquisition, installation, maintenance, and support of the countywide network and computers, and the selection, implementation, and support of county business application systems. Our main customers are the county employees, and also the, uh, some of the area city police departments, support for them, too, with their, with their mobile units and some of their desk units, so, we are a department of six people. I'm the director. We have two systems administrators and three IT support specialists. Our systems administrators, Rory and Jocelyn, um, basically what they do are, they manage the networking infrastructure, system security, backup, restored, disaster recovery, managing the caseworks infrastructure, tier-two support, virtual server, uh, management, and Office 365 management, and, I, the list goes on, whatever they need to do. Those two folks are probably some of the most important positions. They're all important positions, but they're, they're in the background. They don't get seen as much as, as the other people, usually working in the data closets, keeping the networking switches up and running, the servers, and, so basically, if you don't hear much from them, that means they're doing their job well. Our IT support specialists, Pam, Tracy, and Matt, those three folks are, are busy from the second they walk in the door until the time they walk out the door. You know, with, uh, they manage all the, the support phone calls and the, the help desk ticketing system. Those guys do a absolutely incredible job. Um, like I said, they do the, the tier-one phone support, inventory management, they manage the video conferencing centers, all the desktops and peripherals, um, they do the software deployment on these machines, and, and they do, they do a great job. Last year, we had about, I think, the 20, 24 to 2500 help desk tickets were submitted to the help desk, and that doesn't even include the phone calls that, that come in on a daily They, they support roughly 700 users, over 500 personal computers and laptops, 760 telephones, which also doesn't include the cell phones. Um, let's see, we manage 16 data closets on our campus, including highway department and landfill and motor vehicle departments, uh, virtual servers, four virtual servers running roughly 90, 90 virtual servers. In the future, we want to continue to provide quality customer support to our technology users, maintain high-level security, protect county assets and data. We are right in the middle right now of upgrading our entire networking infrastructure to all the switches and the closets. We're about roughly halfway done with that project. We are, um, we're really upgrading our virtual hosts this year. We are also working on a disaster, a technology disaster plan that we're hoping will become a chapter in the emergency operations plan. Basically, the biggest change in that plan is we're going to be prioritizing our applications if we have a disaster, which we've identified all of our systems, but we want to, we want to prioritize, see which systems need to come up first. And so we're going to be meeting with the department head soon, and we'll come up with a plan, which I'll bring back to the board sometime this year. And we're also doing a, a feasibility study on cloud services, and that kind of goes hand-in-hand with the disaster recovery, too. If we can utilize more cloud services, it'll, it'll benefit us, especially in times of a disaster. And that's about all I got. Any questions?
Some more questions?
You said you support some smaller cities. What smaller cities do you support, Dan?
Um, we support, like, the mobiles for Holly, Barnesville, Glennon-Holly, and they'll bring them in, and we'll keep the software updated on them, or if they have an upgrade. And, uh, yeah, for the, for the... And, yeah, for the, for the New World, New World application.
And they're saying your fee schedule, that you've got, you know, thirty-five hundred for large counties and two thousand for smaller counties. What, what type of work is that?
That's for caseworks. Yeah. We are, we are, we have a hosting environment for eleven other counties, in, mostly in this area, and then I Santa County also. And basically, the, the thirty-five hundred is, is per module. So we have a social services module, child support module, and the income maintenance modules for helpers that we host. So for the larger counties like Becker County, Otter Tail County, we charge thirty-five hundred dollars per module, and two thousand dollars per module for the smaller counties to host that environment here.
So you feel the fee schedule's okay with that, your?
Yeah. 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 And, and out of those fees, so much of that will go towards the staffing costs to, to manage the system, and the rest of it goes into an internal services fund to replace that equipment as it needs to be updated.
Okay. Tim, one issue that came up in the PIC committee is that we recognize when there are new employees added, that also pinches your budget as well. It's hard to budget for things in a different department when you don't even know that is coming. And so, you know, we're hoping to address maybe a different way to, to evaluate when those requests come in, how that will affect you in terms of supplying the, not materials, the computers, and whatever technologies needs they have. So that is something that's in conversation. We appreciate that you've been flexible with how that's affected your budget over the years.
Yeah. That's one thing. We try to always stay flexible, even, even right now, this week, with all the moves going on on the second floor, with the carpeting and the painting. You know, my folks are, we had four people down there this morning, working on moving computers. And so we got to move them out of the way, and move them back when the carpet gets done. And so, you know, I just told them, stay flexible, basically, whenever they call, go down there and help them. So.
Yep. Is there any comments?
Doing a really good job.
Brian?
Yeah. Madam Chair, just, and we had promised the board that we would review the fee schedule when the department heads come before, and I think Commissioner Gross addressed that. But when did you institute these fees? I mean, it's been a few years now, hasn't it?
Four years.
Four years, and, and you haven't changed the fee at that time. And you feel it's, you're, you're covering your costs. And, and you said it's per module. How many modules do you have coming in?
Just the three.
Just the three, so?
Well, there's, there's a fourth one, but we don't charge for the miniature module, just for the, the larger modules that are in.
Okay. So this is per county that you charge thirty-five hundred per county?
Unit.
Per unit?
Per county.
So what is your, approximately, your total income that comes in?
Sixty-five thousand dollars.
Sixty-five thousand dollars you have coming in?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I guess I didn't realize it was that much in the budget. I was trying to think of that, that, that.
Yeah. Like I said, a portion of that goes towards our staff costs and goes directly to, back into my revenue.
Right.
And the rest goes into an internal services.
Okay. And that's been something in recent years, so that's really kind of helped your budget, too, hasn't it?
Yeah. Yep. And it, we added the, the social services module last year, and I believe, I think all eleven counties were part of that, ten or eleven. Not all counties are using all modules either, but most are using most of them.
Just one, one last thing. You know, technology has really changed over the last twenty-five years. How long have you been director of that unit?
Going on my twenty-ninth year.
Yeah. So who you've got to thank for the, the upgrades in the county technology service, so.
I've been supervisor for about twenty, going on twenty-six years. When I started, it was Pam and I. We're the only two employees in the counties. Things have changed, and they, you know, they change every year. And they, it has been getting busier and busier, and the demands, the resources in our department have been increasing quite a bit, too. And especially this year with the new buildings, demands are going to be incredible. So it's going to be a, a very busy year for everybody in the department.
Question Campbell?
Good morning, Tim. The, the modules that you talked about, when you say that, that we provide the modules for each of those counties, so is that, is that the software that, that they're using for their daily functions?
Yes. We only supply the hosting environment. The software's purchased from the next chapter company.
So are we like an off-site storage for, of data storage forum? Or I guess I'm trying to understand what, what goes on here.
Well, kind of. I, I consider more of a cloud service, these folks. But they are using our system as a document management system also, so, yes.
Hey, 'cause that, sorry, I was going to say, so, so the sixty-five thousand dollars in revenue that you get, do we have to pay any licensing fees out of those dollars?
Not out of those dollars. Well, licensing fees for software that we use to host the system comes out of those fees. You know, our, our Microsoft Windows, our SQL licensing, SharePoint licensing, things like that. The licensing for the actual casework software is paid for, uh, social services.
Any other comments? I really appreciate your, your expertise, because I'm not, I don't think I'm the only one that can say that I don't fully understand everything that you said, which is why we appreciate you, Mark. So, thank you.
All the smart folks are, are at their desk working right now, so.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mark.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me see if I can turn this thing back on. All right. Wait, so I'm Mark Sloan. I'm the Director of Information Services here at Clay County. I've been here for twenty years. And I lead a group of six folks. And we're the I side of IT, the information side. We are the folks that deliver the information to our end users. Our customers are county staff, as well as the public of our county, as well as our cities and agencies we work with, which includes the Soil and Water District, the state agencies. We provide information to all of those. We do it in quite several different ways. We have, you know, websites. Our online presence is a big piece of what we do, and how we manage all that. And one thing I'll mention right now is we're going to be doing a refresh of our website this year. So we're going to be working with our, our vendor and redoing how it looks. And that will be happening throughout this year. It's going to take several months, and at some point in time, we'll probably come back and show you what we're working on, see how that looks. We have staff that manage our systems and make sure that all of our data is working and is, although the software is functional and all, it takes quite a bit of effort to make sure all those things are purring along as well as they should be. And then we have GIS staff. We have a GIS technician, which we won't be, is normally a student we have in the summer. We gave that up this year because of, we had some budget issues, so we, we gave that money back. So we won't have a student on this summer, but we have a GIS specialist, and then I, I also do a bunch of the GIS work, too. On the GIS side, we manage two-hundred-and-eighty layers of information that we keep current and accurate. The biggest ones of those are our addresses, parcels, and roads. Addresses, last year, we generated three-hundred-and-thirty-one new addresses in the county. So there's stuff happening out there that we, and we're, we're the, the addressing authority. So we make sure that that, that's current and accurate, and give out the addresses, and then we pass them on to the agencies that need those, which would include the regional dispatch and those kind of places. We, we manage over about thirty thousand parcels, and we try to keep those as current as we can. And we deliver that through our online sites, as well as we provide the data to those agencies that need it. And then roads are, are a big piece that are used in the emergency response and some other areas. This year, in, on the GIS side, some of the big things we're working on is Census. Census twenty-twenty is coming up, and as a part of that, they are updating the data in twenty-eighteen. That's a big year for that. We just finished, the, the Census loves acronyms. We just finished something called the BASS, which is the Boundary and Annexation Survey. We, we sent that to them so that all of our city limit boundaries and everything are current. And coming up in February, we'll start working on something called LUCA, which is the local update of census addresses. They'll send us their addresses. We'll compare them to ours and send it back. That's going to be a pretty big effort for our staff to, to accomplish. But the goal behind that is we want the Census to have as accurate of information as we can, because that's beneficial to all of us. So we'll be working on that. The other big thing, I think I mentioned it last summer I was here, we're working on, because this is a really big effort, is Next Generation nine-one-one. We provide the data that the Regional Dispatch Center uses on their screens. When the call comes in, they get maps and that stuff. With Next Generation nine-one-one, the calls will actually be geographically based on the map first, instead of using what's called the alley information, which is when you dial a phone number, it passes along with your phone number, the police, fire, that kind of stuff. Well, that doesn't work with cell phones, so the Next Generation nine-one-one is changing how that works. So when a call comes in, it places it on the maps, is this call is here, which fire, police, ambulance, district response. And so GIS data is the key then, and we, we have to have our data matching the standards that are needed. To make that even more exciting, each state is working on that, and we happen to have a dispatch center that supports both Clay County in Minnesota and Cass County in North Dakota. Of course, Minnesota and North Dakota's mapping standards aren't the same. So we have, we're working with that to try to make sure that we, the data we're providing will work with the, our dispatch center, which is actually in North Dakota. So we've got a lot of stuff going on there, trying to keep all that current and running. One of the things I did want to do is I wanted to do a little show and tell. I've got the screen up here with our main website on it. And, but what I wanted to show you was, we've had, for many, many years, we've had a, a mapping application that people can use to find out, we have a lot of different mapping applications, you know, parcel information, all this stuff. But one of them was, Who's My Commissioner? And we recently redone that, and we've got this really nice map system here now that is available. And people can go there and you can type in their address, and it'll zoom in and show them which one of you they should contact. This is actually tied to a database back here, so if somebody, somebody here changes, it would update itself. But, so it's a nice application that helps our, our, our folks out there can graphically see which, which areas each one of you represents. So you can actually manipulate the map however you want. But one of the things I want to show that's even, I think is even more fun, is on the main website, well, let me go right back here. On the main website, right here on the left-hand side, we've got this link that says County Board, and that takes you to here. It's really popular right now because that's got the link to watch the meeting live, so people can see what I'm talking about. But we have this link here that says Find Your Commissioner. And what this one will do, let me click on it, it brings up an address search box. So then you just type in your address, whatever that might happen to be, like, and as you type, you see, oh, the list starts to populate itself here. So as I click that, it pulls, actually pulling data from that other website, the county website we're seeing. So it's propagating this here, and it's, it's pretty, what, what I think is, you know, from our side of it is, there's a lot of different technologies happening here, but the response time is pretty, pretty fast. I like that, that, that part of it. It's working well for us. So like, as to, I don't know the address. I'm guessing, I didn't write the number down. Let's try this one.
That's all. That's me.
Oh, that's you. That's still be you. But whichever address you pick, we can do Kevin. I know he's up here, because we, this is the address that I always use for testing, is us, County Courthouse, because that's the one address I know. But, yeah, so it gives a really quick thing, gives some links there, so if, if a citizen wants to get ahold of you, they can really quickly find that answer.
That's helpful, because that has been a comment that I've heard is confusing for people to figure out exactly who was.
Yeah, exactly, who my commissioner is. So now they can go right in or type in their address, in either one, either through the map form or the other one, and it gives them how to contact you. Because on the map one, if you're there, if you click on it, it will actually give you that same kind of information, how to contact it when you zoom in. So using some of that same functionality and concept, this is actually where it started, is we've for many, many years provided access to our parcel data online, and it's been hugely popular. I mean, we've got, we've been doing it since nineteen ninety-nine, and we have a new search tool here. It's called the Property Information Search, to make it even easier on how you do that. And it'll, it'll work in the same kind of way. You type an address, or you can type a parcel number, and it gives the most basic information that people are looking for. We, we actually did a survey to find out what people really needed, and we got the eight items that they wanted most commonly, put them there. But if you want to, you can generate some more detailed reports, you can go to the map, you can go to tax statements, you can go to assessment information, all there that swiftly and easily. So that's what we're trying to promote this. And that's what our whole department is all about, is how do we get access to the information? We've got county government is packed full of information. So how do we deliver it to the folks that really need it? And that's what we're constantly trying to do. So one of the things we talked, we're, I'm supposed to talk to you a little bit about, is our fees. We don't charge a lot of fees. Our data is free. We give that out to people because we want them to use our data, because we are what's called the local authoritative source on that stuff, so we want people to use it. We do charge some fees. Once, we have something called a special projects fee, which we will charge for, once in a while, we'll get somebody who wants us to do something special, like they come to here and they want to locate a store, and they want to do some research. And they'll contact us, and say, can you make me a map that shows these things? And we'll say, yeah, we can do that, but we're going to charge you whatever the cost is of that person that's going to do that work. The other thing we charge for is printing, because there's an actual cost to printing. And we updated that just this last winter again. We look, we get a monthly statement on our, what our costs are for our supplies on our large format plotter, because that's the big one people are looking at. They want to print stuff big. And so we charge a fee for that. And so we don't charge a lot of fees, and we don't generate a lot of revenue. I think it's about two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a year is all we generate for printing. It's not a lot, but another reason we do that is it helps control how much requests we get for printing. You know, when we say, yeah, well, we'll do that for you, but we're going to charge you ten bucks a page or fifteen, which isn't a lot, but, and some folks will pay that, or some organizations will, but most of them will say, oh, no, no thanks. We'll, we'll move on. One final thing I wanted to mention was, we're also responsible for the section corner remonumentation program in Clay County, which we use, we used to have a county surveyor, now we contract that service out. That contract piece that we've got has been working exceptionally well. We just met with him last week. We went over everything that was completed in two thousand seventeen, and then we looked at where we're going to be focusing our efforts in two thousand eighteen. And we are looking for places where we're having issues with where section corners are. And the, the hope for that is when we get good quality section corners, that makes the surveys in those areas much less expensive for whoever's doing surveys out there. Most likely, our citizens are needing something. Plus, on our side of it, it helps us control our, our parcel maps. When we have our parcel maps, we can fix the accuracy issues in some of those areas. We just completed working in Holly, Eglin, and Park Townships, which were some of our more challenging areas in the county, as far as we're control, because there hadn't been a lot of control work done out there. And this next year, we'll be moving into Tansom and Scree area, kind of that same corner of the county, trying to clean up some of that stuff. So that project's working, working very well. I think it was a really good decision that, that you made to, to change how we do that. But it's, we're getting good quality product, and we're able to use it here, as well as we share it. And then actually, let me go back a page. On our main website, there is a link on the left-hand side for Platts Corners and surveys online. Anybody that needs to can click that, find those section corner monument, certificates, and use them. And that's part of the whole goal, is to deliver the data so that people can use it and make, make good choices, as well as hopefully save money and time for everybody else. Any questions?
Any comments?
One of the, on top of all the stuff that, that you and your staff do, I, I knew you were going to be here today, so I, I did not talk about the portion of our construction update that we did. And Mark is really involved with security issues that are going to be dealing with, with, with our three entities, being the courthouse, the new LEC, and, and the jail. And without compromising security information, do you want to just briefly talk about what you're doing? I know you're, you're talking about some old stuff and...
Right. So what, what, that project is, is, you know, we've got the two massive construction projects, the new law enforcement center and a new correctional facility. And the old law enforcement center will be torn down next fall. And the old law enforcement center will be torn down next fall. This building has court security in it down there, and they have cameras in all the courtrooms, and they have secure holding cells for, for people that are going to court. And all this functionality built inside the courthouse here. When they built it, they needed an electronic system to run all of that, and they, the thought was, hey, we've already got one in the jail, let's use that. So everything in this building was wired back to the jail, the old jail, and it's been working off that system. Well, at some point, come October, that jail's gonna be gone, so we have to be able to function that equipment without it. So we're looking at how do we make that happen? It's, what complicates it is when we first remodeled the courthouse and added some of that stuff back in 2002, they added a certain number of cameras and door controls, and after time, they decided they needed more, so they added more. And the system's been kind of built on over the years, and it's kind of cumbersome would be a nice word. And it all, all the wires go back into the old law enforcement center, into a closet in the basement. So what we're looking at doing is basically severing that connection, installing all new equipment in the basement of this building to handle the security electronics, is what it's called, in this building, so that the guys at Court Admin can do exactly what they're still doing. But we've got a fair amount on the backend, how to make that all work. And it's proving to be much more complex than it sounded. When they first had the idea, when I first was brought into it, we said, oh, that'll be easy. Yeah, no, what we're learning is it's not nearly so simple. One of the things we're also looking at as part of that is trying to combine how some of our software systems are used, specifically if we're putting in some new controls for the cameras. In this building, we'd like them to be able to also control the cameras in the new law enforcement center, so that those systems are together. The new correctional facility will have its own standalone system, so we won't be involved with that at all. They'll totally be segregated, which is something that the jail people had always wanted. They wanted the correctional facility separate electronically from the courthouse, for quite a few reasons that they have. So that's, that's a, that's a big project.
Well, thank you for working on that.
Yeah, I've learned a lot of things I didn't, it's one of those things I didn't know I didn't know until I learned about it.
No, I just want to thank you too for your, I know you said you had 280 layers of information.
Yes.
Last month or a couple of months ago, asked for information on government-owned land, and in a matter of, I don't know, a few minutes, you had, you had all that information together, and we've had a map, a map of it, you know, and I really appreciate all that information.
Thank you.
I mean, you have so much information, I think that people don't understand it yet, you know, and I think, you know, and you're trying to get it out there, say, hey, use this information, we got it. And you do have a lot, and I appreciate what you do.
And we try to anticipate what information's gonna be needed, which is a challenge.
Mark, thank you to you and your staff, you do a great job.
Thank you.
Good work.
All right, Sheriff Burquist and Lieutenant Lansum?
Good morning. We're here to ask for the board's approval to hire a new full-time employee due to a retirement that we have coming up. This time, Mike Trigg, deputy, is gonna be retiring in February. And we've already established a list of applicants, because we anticipated this, and we probably had to anticipate three to four more this year, so we will probably be back later on.
So it looks like you're anticipating a savings of a little under $16,000 for fiscal year 2018, is that correct?
Yeah, for salaries, yes.
Not including PTO time. All right, any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
We have a motion to approve the request?
Taken.
And a second, any further discussion?
I just want to ask a question. Stephen, the, on the bottom of your report, you talk about, you know, the full-time, including uniforms and the, and the training and things, which obviously somebody knew was gonna have to go through some of those.
Yes.
In the case of somebody like Deputy Trigg leaving early into the new year, do we, do we save on those uniform costs?
Not really, because his uniforms and stuff probably were replaced last year.
But is it, is it an annual?
Not, not the uniforms. It's when they're, when they're used and get tore or something like that.
I didn't know if it was an annual allotment for uniforms.
No, just for day, like investigators, there's an allotment per year.
Okay, I didn't know.
But not for uniforms. Because we gotta start them off with all new stuff. None of Mike's old uniforms can be reused.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not suggesting hand me down. I just didn't, I just didn't know if, if in 2018, we would have been doubling up that 2,000 for the new plus with.
No, it's just a startup cost. And that cost will go down as employees here longer.
Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Probably feedback.
I have one thing to say about Mark Sloan's work. He works very well with us, especially in the case of analysts and stuff, and using those maps during court presentations, and he's just been amazing for us, especially investigations.
That's great to hear. I think there's a really good collaboration between those departments and everyone, but specifically, we'll relay your appreciation. Thank you.
Because we put him on short time, timeframes when we need stuff, and he's been so accommodating for us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Kathy McCabe will take your item now. Who have a request to fill a vacancy for a full-time public health nurse?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We have the salary calculation worksheet.
Thank you for getting that.
Is provided in this position. As you can see, we have a full-time nurse that has resigned, so we're requesting to fill that. She's in the Case Management Assessor Program in Adult Health. And we do have, she had many years of public health experience, so she was hired on a higher step than the first three. So we will have some savings, as you note, if we can hire someone at a lower step in that category, in the public health nurse category. And then there's just a little bit of payout that we will have to incur for her departure. So we would need to advertise maybe internally and externally. If there's an internal candidate, I would request that we can fill that position.
Okay. So you did show a savings in the handout that everyone got. Is there any questions or comments? If not, what are this board's wishes? We have a motion to approve with backfill? Motion includes backfill, there's a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, we're a little ahead of schedule. Commissioner Cahaney, would you like to do your reports? And because you were out due to illness, I did not report on your previous weeks, so if you'd like to recap that as well, I'm sorry.
Last, the week before, I didn't have anything.
Okay.
And I think I reported that last week.
Okay, sorry.
But I'm ready to go for... Well, anyway. The toss. On Tuesday, I attended the Clay County Adult Mental Health Local Advisory Committee meeting, and we heard a presentation from Connections about adult mental health, foster care, employment, and housing issues. And then on Wednesday, I attended the diversion finance committee, and they approved a change order that had no cost, which was the first in the history of the diversion committee. That was interesting. And then on Thursday, I attended the board meeting for the Lake Agus Regional Library Group, and we have committed reports and heard about various projects remodeling in different libraries and whatnot in the, in the network. And that's my entire report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cahaney. Dave, are you ready for your items? Good morning.
Good morning.
I see we have four approvals on the agenda.
Yeah, the first one is our joint project. We got four other counties, we put together a highway safety improvement project. It's for intersection lighting. Our share of the project, I guess, we've got, I think there's six, there's eight different locations in Clay County. They were looking at doing the overhead lighting on, several of them are on shared MINDOT and county intersections. MINDOT does cost share on some of those, and I think it's a good project. So far, we've had success on several of them that we have lit. Has everybody, has everybody seen the map and kind of knows where we're doing them?
Yeah, just a comment, those have been really helpful, specifically in the rural areas, it's nice to have those lit up. I assume that the accidents have gone down on those intersections.
Yeah, I agree. I don't know that, they definitely do improve visibility in some of these cases, so. So what I guess I'd like to do is get approval to advertise. We don't have an exact letting date just yet, but it's gonna be probably in, I think Eric wrote down here, either mid to late March, or maybe early April.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Your item number two, approval of the annual hauling permit for construction materials?
Yeah, this was something that came down from MINDOT. Starting the first of the year, MINDOT does now allow a six- and seven-axle permit specifically for construction materials. The Clay County does offer the same permit for, I think it's called raw and unprocessed egg products, specifically sugarbeets. Transsystems buys probably anywhere from 15 to 20 of these permits a year. It's supposed to spread the weight out more, the tire sizes are bigger, less loads would be on our roadways, and more distributed, so less damage. I checked with some of the neighboring counties, and they are also selling this permit. So what I would propose that we do upon your approval is we would, the permit looks almost exactly like our current six- and seven-axle permit. We would charge the same amount that we do as the state does as well, $300 per truck for a six-axle configuration, and a $500 permit for a seven-axle configuration.
Is that the state mandated price, or is that the?
I guess that's what they set. I mean, we can charge whatever we want, but I guess for the most part, I'd kind of follow suit with whether neighboring counties are charging a certain amount or the state.
Are, you said it aligns with our other permit. When was the last time we addressed that?
Well, most of the permits are fairly new, I guess, and I think, I talked to the county administrator a little bit, and I think I will when I bring my update to the board. I'll also discuss some history on our permits. I think, I wouldn't, you know, other than utility, I think I started doing the charging on permits probably in the last 10 years or so.
2009, I think it's.
Yeah, prior to that, I don't think we charged anything for any permits. It just started with probably the utility permit and the moving permit, and it just kind of grew from there. We have the harvest permit, the 10% rate, all the farmers really, they appreciate that, so they can haul a little bit more, it's $60 per permit and that sort of thing. But the transsystems one, or the raw and unprocessed one, that was also in that '09 range.
And the only reason I ask, and I kind of, I get this as a construction materials one, but you know, those bigger transsystems trucks, there's not a whole lot of sugar beet operation that happens in Otter Tail and Becker County, and so that's kind of where I, I question aligning too much with those, since the majority of that, you know, is closer to the river here, but that's up to us.
I guess, like you said, I know the AGC has contacted, some of the counties have contacted me. One of the local ag growers also called and was interested if we were gonna allow and also offer the construction materials, six- and seven-axle permit. I guess I feel like it's kind of the way that the trend is going. We have allowed it for the raw and unprocessed materials. I'm not that excited about having more weight on our roads, but if it is less trips, and if it is distributed better, and it looks like the science on it shows that it should provide, you know, give less damage on your roadways, I guess I would support offering this permit.
Okay. What are this board's wishes?
Most are approved.
We have a motion to approve the permit fees and a second. Any further discussion?
Dave, these weights don't apply to interstate highways, I believe.
Correct, yeah, that is the one stipulation, yeah. MINDOT always reserves that right, they always say it doesn't apply to, so there is some special provisions at the bottom of our permit that's similar to the previous, the current permit that we have. During screening load restrictions, the axles must comply with legal weights. Permits are only allowed on nine- and 10-ton roadways, we're not sending them on our weaker gravel roads. It's subject to bridge load limits, because if a bridge is old and weaker, and has a restricted weighting, you can't send these heavy loads on there. Super single tires will not be allowed. Wide-based tires or larger will be allowed, so that's kind of spreading your weight out on a bigger tire. And then we also specifically talk about our County Road 14 Bridge. We've had some studies down on that one, it's by the Glendon Piler, and they're, when I say there, it's our bridge engineer that does the load ratings, they suggest we keep speeds down to 15 miles an hour, so you're not bouncing across that bridge. So I, I mean, there's, we talked about this a little bit at Highway Committee, and I think I will generate also kind of a preferred route map that maybe would help aid some of these contractors on specific areas. I talked about it with our staff a little bit yesterday, and we don't, you know, we've been doing a pretty good job removing some of these really restricted bridges. We've got one on County Road 2 right now that we're working with the state on, helping us get rid of that one. In the future, as we do have other, you know, areas of interest that we want to make sure we protect and keep some of the heavy loads off, we would generate a map that would help some of the haulers.
Who would regulate that? I mean, is anybody gonna watch that?
Well...
I think if you produce a map, don't you think they'll dodge that route?
Well, that would, we'd want them to, though, you know, we'd want to stay off a bridge, or if we have a roadway that's speeding down to seven ton per axle. As far as, yeah, you're right, their permit would probably have it listed that you want to stay off of this roadway. Like I said, we don't have any of these areas right now, but down the road, commercial, MINDOT's commercial vehicle enforcement would be the ones, but you're right, it doesn't happen all that time, very often. I've heard there's one hauler in our county that's, they used to get all kinds of permits from us, now we haven't heard from them much, and they've been pulled over twice, and they don't have any permits, so there's a lot of, a lot of things going on, but there's, there's a little enforcement out there, and I think they kind of know who's doing what a little bit, but closer we can work with the State Patrol, the better.
Any further discussion?
So when someone takes out a permit, you communicate that with the sheriff's officer?
Well, they get a copy of it, and they're supposed to have it in their truck, I guess. We don't really have it listed anywhere. They call us, if they, they pull someone over, they would call us, and, you know, the State Patrol would give us a call and see what they have, or what they, if they don't have it with them, and so I guess that's kind of the communication. Most of our permits are online, so it's pretty easy for our staff to go back and look, and oh, yeah, they got this permit maybe a week ago, and here's the route they proposed to take, and share that information.
Any further questions? If not, what is the, this board's wishes? Oh, do we? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number three?
Item number three is a proposal for engineering services. It's a cooperative project with the City of Fargo. Several years ago, all the entities around the metro area put together a, let's see what we call it here, a bridge maintenance agreement, and it was for Cass, Clay Counties, and Fargo and Moorhead, and it described duties on specifically the Red River Bridges. Certain entities had shared interest in there. I think Clay and Fargo, it used to be Clay and Cass County, but for some reason, on their end, they have transferred some jurisdictions, so the bridges, I guess I'm specifically thinking are the Wall Street Bridge, the North Broadway Bridge, and County Road 12 Bridge. Those ones are now Clay County and City of Fargo. And the way the agreement was put together, any maintenance-type projects and investigations and works would be kind of spearheaded up by Clay County. And if you remember, down in 2012, last year, we did some of that, we did some deck work, we did some painting work underneath the bridge on the beams, and we also repaired a big scour hole underneath there that was starting to undermine some of the bridge piling. But what we got now is we've got a, and we've known about it for a long time, but we have some significant movement going on at that North Broadway Bridge. And it's been going on almost since they built it in the mid... been going on almost since they built it in the mid-eighties. Our crews go out there annually and inspect the movement to see if the piers continue to slide. There was some work done on one of the, on one of the pier caps to extend and make it a little bit wider, so that the beam that sits on there has more room as it starts moving. And like I said, we've known about it for a long time. The bridge is not that old, but every year MINDOT comes to town, and they take a look at the bridges up and down the valley, the Red River crossings, and it's just seemed like they're getting more and more concerned about it. So I, I wasn't sure if the city of Fargo was very privy to this knowledge, so I brought them into the conversation about a year ago, and we decided we should probably let a contract that would do a little bigger, deeper investigation, geotextile type investigation on this bridge. So Fargo is kind of taking the lead. On any engineering projects, the agreement spells out that City of Fargo would take the lead on it, and we, we got RFPs last spring, and to do, like I said, it's about an eighteen month project. It takes a look at, a real deep look, and also puts together recommendations for what we can do to try to, you know, make sure that we're, we have the most safest bridge crossing that we have, and what we can do to basically extend the life on this thing. And we just can't tear it down. It's only twenty-five years old. So SRF and I believe it was Bron, I think, are the two that teamed together that were chosen. It's a fairly sizable project. It does encounter, as I said, a lot of study. Most of the work is all geotextile work. SRF would compile that and put together the report. The total not to exceed project is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and it'd be shared fifty-fifty with Clay County and City of Fargo. We do have state aid funds that I guess I would propose to cover our share. Most of the work is going to get done in the summer, fall of nineteen, and then the remainder, or eighteen and the remainder in twenty nineteen. So a lot of these costs will be shared between twenty eighteen's and twenty nineteen's budget, so.
Discussion. Commissioner Campbell?
We had, we have had this discussion with the, within our Highway Tracking Committee meeting, and I know that, you know, at the time, up until annexation, that was, you know, that was outside of the boundaries of the city of Morehead, and Commissioner Gross was asking questions about, at what point is it, is it a city issue versus a county issue? The, the three bridges you talked about were the Wall Street Bridge, the North Broadway Bridge, and twelve. And all of those, it's because that they, they connect to a county road. Is that?
Yes.
So like, so this road that they're connecting to is kind of Route one?
Yeah.
So that, that's why we're involved with it?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's our county right away and right up to the center of the river, I guess. So our share of the structures, the, I don't know, could be the north half, I guess, in this case, can go north and south.
Well, it's a good partnership between the two entities, for sure.
Yeah, and I, and I, you know, I get, again, I guess I'm, I'm assuming that there's a significant number of the traffic that flows over there, isn't necessarily just from the city limits of Morehead either, that it's also all the folks coming from, whether it's Georgetown, Cragness, and all using that bridge.
What are the board's wishes?
Well, I, we certainly need to make sure that bridge is safe, so I would move approval.
I would second that.
A motion to approve and a second.
I want a question. What's that going to lead to? I mean, say they find significant problems with this, I mean, do we have funds to repair this bridge?
We would probably either try to get some federal aid funding, or use our state aid funding. So it'd be all eligible, and/or bridge bonding, I guess. Most of these bigger projects, we can get bridge bond funds, you know, the last couple of years. Most of the bridge bond funds have been kind of utilized for some of the big budget buster type bridges down in the metro area, but that would be the three funding sources that we, we wouldn't be using a lot of local dollars on it.
Okay.
Commissioner Campbell has a question.
Excuse me, one more question. In terms of the, so obviously, the bridge is still open, so there doesn't seem to be any imminent danger regarding the structural issues that are going on in there. Does that bridge have weight restrictions?
No, no, that one's, that one's.
Okay. Well, part of this study indicate whether there should be until modifications or corrections can be made to the problem?
Yep. The objective of the study was to take a look at why it's failing, make recommendations for slowing or stopping the deterioration on it, and then make repair recommendations. So it would take in all that, as well as the structural part. I don't think the structural part is, is as much of an issue, like I said, as the tipping and the tilting.
I hear about a tipping bridge, and it, you know, as I'm driving over something that's tipping, I might be a little bit concerned about that.
Sure. Well, I'll make sure, you know, I guess I'll make sure, I'll report back to you as the study goes on to our Highway Committee and kind of what we're finding.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval for our auto state travel for the National County Engineers Conference?
Yeah, this year it's a little colder than it has been in the past. Our, our National County Engineer Conference is in the Wisconsin Dells. Eric and I discussed this in great detail, and what we kind of like to do, if we get, if we get approval, is there's a lot of stuff on policies and legislative type breakout sessions, and they've also got a lot of stuff on bridges and different, different styles of construction. They've got a lot of stuff on, one of the real big things they're talking about right now is pavement rehab. You know, we don't have a lot of money to completely reconstruct everything, so there's hot in place recycling, there's cold in place recycling, and there's, there's thinner overlays. You know, we don't have as much money to do a three inch overlay, so they're actually doing three quarter inch Betumis overlays, and they're having different case studies, and there's lots of different things on maintenance and equipment, and you can't hardly go to all of them. And I guess our, our plan, if we got approval to go, is he would maybe target more of the things that he's actually working on day to day, which would be the engineering things, the project things, new things that are going on in different parts of the country. It seems like I get more involved with more policy-driven type work, and I would like to try to attend some more of those sessions. They got a lot of stuff going on with the autonomous vehicles, and I think I brought back to our committee that I did kind of partner up with several other counties to talk about autonomous and connected vehicles, and how we could be used as some sort of a pilot project in that venture here down the road, so.
So you're looking for approval for you and the assistant engineering?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, it's in, towards the end of April. We do put money in our budget, whether it's approved or not by the board, but we do have funds in there that would cover both of the costs. I think it would be somewhere between, I took a look last night, and I kind of tried to drill it all down, between thirty-five hundred and four thousand dollars for the two of us to go there.
Have a motion to approve?
Correct.
And a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. I do have a comment. Some residents from Barnesville reached out to me to thank you and your department for the flexibility in help removing snow for a large funeral there. So that community was grateful to the county going an extra bit to help out there, so thank you very much. All right, moving into the remainder of our committee reports. Commissioner Gross?
I had the Historical Society, and I mentioned a little bit last month already that they were doing good this year, and the final report was they had a very good year, came in way under, I mean, the proceeds that were brought in were really, had a good report this year. Mostly that St. John's Bible that was brought in, that, that's still going to be there till February the fourth, so if you haven't seen it yet, I mean, it's brought in over thirty thousand visitors already in the last couple of months, and it's just been one great display there. And although a lot of upcoming things there, it's the Given Hearts Day, if anybody is involved in that, if you'd like to support that, Historical Society's looking for funds there, too. But they're doing a good job, very good year for them. That was it.
Thank you, Commissioner Gross. Commissioner Whelan?
Uh, let's see, I had the diversion outreach and diversion meeting last week, and Commissioner Campbell already reported on those. I had an AMC board meeting in St. Paul on Friday, and we spent a lot of the time going, there's a lot of new board members, so a lot of time was spent going over what the responsibilities are to be on the board. Then we had the jail construction and law enforcement center construction meeting yesterday, and Commissioner Campbell reported on that. It's, it really is amazing how that project is going, and Mr. Berg brought up something at the meeting yesterday about some issue here in the, where there was no insulation they found during some work on that courthouse. And so he questioned what, what our engineers are doing to see, our construction engineers are doing to see we don't have those problems in the future with these new projects. And I thought they had a good, you know, response to that. They have at least a couple of people that are constantly checking the work of all the contractors, and if there's problems, they photograph it, submit it right away, and correct it. So we shouldn't have any of those problems with this project in the future, which I thought was good news just in itself, so. And that was it for me.
Thank you. Last week I also attended the PIC committee. That's been covered quite well. We had a renewable energy ordinance meeting. Subcommittee of the Planning Commission just discussed a renewable energy ordinance that we'll be working on in terms of how we deal with the permitting of large solar farms, which is something being on the Environment and Natural Resources Committee. Many of the counties in southern Minnesota didn't have these on the books when these larger farms came in, so there's significant discrepancies in how they were permitted. So we're hoping to follow the lead of, of some of the recommended wording for the ordinance to pass that. It'll be up for discussion tonight at the Planning Commission. I attended MetroCog Executive Committee. We're in the process of interviews for that executive director, so I had a meeting last week to discuss that process. We then had the regular meeting of MetroCog per the rotation for board chair. CAS County, Arlen Rasmussen is now the board chair, and I was elected vice chair for that body. Had good, good discussion and reports. We were unable to get a quorum in December, so we had two months' worth of conversation, but really a good conversation in terms of how MetroCog has not been part of the conversation in terms of diversion planning, and Commissioner Pepcorn really wanted to make sure they were at the table to discuss bridge crossings, and then anything is on their plans. And specifically, there was a Horace issue, so just making sure that that, they're in those conversations. And then talking about the additional twenty eighteen CPG funds that I had talked about, and Dave Overbow is now in conversation with the city of Morehead to see if there's any planning dollars that we can use there, so good conversation. Had more rounds of interviews here, as I said. Thank you to staff for accommodating those. That was really helpful. Yesterday, I attended Lakeland Mental Health in Fergus Falls. We had an executive committee meeting to discuss some personnel issues, followed by the regular board meeting. For the first time in a long time, Commissioner, Mike McCarthy gave an update of the Clay County Collaborative. It now has a balance of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in their reserves, which is something that is taking a while to build up, but they've got some good ideas for working on that, and they do have some students working on their website, so they are excited about that. Other than that, everything continues to look good. They were relieved to hear about the CHIPS funding being secured for health insurance. That affects a large clientele for them. And just a reminder, the execu, or the annual meeting for that will be Monday, February twenty-sixth. You are all invited to that. The annual meeting starts at eleven, and there's a lunch in eleven forty-five. Then I attended a meeting for Lakes and Prairies in terms of the discussion for possibly renaming, rebranding that. It was a good discussion. We're going to table it until next month, because we won't have a quorum for this next meeting. And then I did have a meeting with their executive director in terms of some personnel issues, followed by another meeting for MetroCog to discuss the shortlist for the candidates for executive director, and talk about interviews that will hopefully happen next week. Commissioner Haney, you're invited to any of those, if you'd like to attend those. That concludes my reports. Brian, do you have any?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm tired just listening to your report.
Stayin' busy.
You're busy, very busy. Well, talk a little more about the PIC meeting, but that has been covered very well. But one of the topics that, that the board wanted us to review was the process and how new employees are added to the roster, because it is an important issue to control the expansion of government. And frankly, just a very positive thing that was brought up during this conversation, too, when IT was here. When people add new positions, sometimes we leave out those support staff that are needed to support those, and it adds work and costs on them. So Darren's working on a checklist that we'll go through when that does come to the PIC committee. So that's one of the very positive things that are coming out of this, is that we need to look at all of the costs and all of the things that are added when, when a new position, it's, it's room, it's, it's phones, it's computers, and, and there's a lot of things to consider, and this will really help clarify that. So that's a very good thing. Spent some time with Georgia and Janelle. Chaney from probation referenced reallocations. Again, things are moving along very positively there. I think we're making some good steps. You guys approved that improvement, the funds for improving the office spaces over there as we move people around in anticipation of the juvenile expansion. So spent some time with that, a couple of different meetings in regards to that. Had six personnel evaluations in the month of January on your department heads, and I do appreciate, and if you have issues that you want to visit with them, with me about them, good and bad, please do that. That really helps when, when it comes time, because there's sixteen of them that, that I have to review, and I can't keep a real close eye on every one of them, and you guys are in meetings with them. So communications with me in regards to those is really, really helpful. So thank you for that. We had a central administration managers meeting last week as well, just to review the projects that are going on, and you heard, again, several today, that were, are, the move of the land management offices is really, really going well. Again, a bunch of coordination, and Joe and IT and Mark with the phones and things. It just, it just takes a lot to make these things happen, and they go very, very smoothly. Tended a MCIT webinar last week in regards to their coverage and how they want things handled. I guess Colleen, you did, too. You were in the other room on the, on the computer as well with that webinar. Construction meeting, that's been talked about, yeah. It is kind of surprising, we go two weeks, and there's just, things are just rolling along, rolling along with very little, we talk about any change that's coming up two, three times before it actually gets to it, and, and I think everybody, at least you heard from the commissioners, too, that are very satisfied and impressed with the progress that is being made there, and that's, that's really, really nice to see. I did send out an email, I don't have it in front of me here, in regards to information, reference a, a pollution control conference that's being held here in March, and the city had made some contact, and, and Chris Volkers, the county, or city manager, had asked me to assist possibly with some planning of an agenda and different things. So if, if you folks are interested in attending that, I'll certainly spend the time helping with that agenda and working on that. So let me know when you get a chance. It's out in March, so we have a little bit of time on that. Friday, you have the retreat at the Marriott, Courtyard by Marriott. I think you're all registered for that, if I'm not mistaken, so just a reminder on that. The auditor claims list, is that working out? I think we implemented that now three, four months ago, and, and that comes out electronically. If that's all working fine?
Bills?
Yeah, the bills.
Yeah, thank you for continuing to include that.
Okay, very good. And I guess the only thing I have, Madam Chair, is that, instead of listening to the board meeting today, it very, very positive. It was very nice. It, it's moved along well, and, and it's, it's nice to hear. I don't, sometimes we just sit and listen to that, and it was just really good, good, good exchange.
Great. Just a couple comments of note. Thank you to Kirk Rosenberg and his staff for preparing the presentation for the Senate Capital Investment Committee. It's always an honor to have them come, and, and hopefully we can continue to advocate for some dollars there. Of note, if you're able to go to the Joint Powers Retreat this Friday, make sure and let Colleen know. The JPA has worked hard to get that, that agenda out, and there will be no board meeting next week. Okay? Any further discussion? If not, we are adjourned. Any further discussion? If not, we are adjourned.